Please.
Mr. Moritz?
Here.
Mr. Moritz, you see?
Here.
Mr. Moritz Allen?
Here.
Mr. Moritz Allen?
Here.
Mr. Sainston here.
Here. Uh, please stand for one more side, please. Thank you. I would like to say this is the life of the United States of America due to the laws of the Constitution. My nation, where my people live, is the Constitution of America. Before we get started this evening, uh, Monday night from five thirty to approximately eight P M, the board was in executive session to, uh, for interviews. Uh, after the work session on Monday, we went back into executive session from nine to approximately ten thirty on personnel. This evening before the board meeting from five thirty, uh, to approximately seven o'clock, we were in executive session on personnel and litigation. We have a, uh, few people this evening to speak, uh, for the board. I just want to remind everybody that your, please limit your comments to three minutes. When you start to get close to three minutes, I will, uh, let you know so you have time to conclude. And, uh, always be respectful of everybody, please no personal attacks. Thank you. What hat do I have, a motion, uh, for the minutes of the previous meeting of June twenty first, twenty third, twenty ninth of two thousand twenty one?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Do I have a motion to pay the, for the treasurer's report?
I'm so moved.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Do I have a motion for the payment of general and federal fund bills? Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Do I have a motion for the payment of the capital reserve fund bills? Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Do I have a motion for the payment of the cafeteria fund bills? Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Moving to public comment. Restored masks on mask.
The meeting, I know I was here on Monday, but we're just going to ask maybe what did, and so I want to just think of our community because I feel like I do it in a minute. Um, I did want to take the opportunity to amend, um, behalf of myself and seven hundred and forty of our community stakeholders as if we're going to update school year's health and safety. But we want to, are giving option to the parents. We have just, and fresh people, young children who need to be, learn to interact with one another. These social norms and, uh, yeah, yeah. Okay. There is also concern for mental and physical health and safety of all of our children in the long term continued of mask wearing. Long term mask wearing has negative health and societal ramifications. It's been proven that long term mask wearing, such as our children are required to do during the school day, have been known to be contaminated with bacteria, parasites, and ammonia causing bacteria as well. There's also data on learning showing that learning is curbed due to mask wearing or loss of learning, especially in speech and in reading, which loss of learning is addressed here at this meeting in June. We could spend a lot of time debating the data, our views on masks, et cetera, and let the board just think of all of these, the guidelines and recommendations. And while I can understand and appreciate that, they are the most their recommendations. And as parents, we deserve the right to choose for our children. And when given that, the current vaccination rate for Fayette County is fifty four thousand two hundred and fifty four people with both shots, and three thousand nine hundred and thirty two people with one shot, and voice of seven hundred and thirty eight community stakeholders. We are urging the board to ensure that the mask is optional and that the parent toys. We feel strongly, of all seven hundred and forty eight of us, that the board who was voted on represents the entire community. And our children deserve normalcy. We are imploring the board to stop the policy of banning masks and give parents the option to choose. Again, we have seven hundred and forty eight segmenters in this petition that want the right to choose for their child. And we, we feel strongly that we want to see the smiling faces of our healthy children returning to school without masks this upcoming school year. And this is coming from us in spirit for seven hundred and forty eight parents. Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Jeremy Ritchie Mask.
Look, thank you, uh, I just want to reiterate, reiterate, uh, Mrs. Bonix's proposition. Uh, I'm just gonna present the information that I have here as quickly as I can. Concerning the danger of masks, the American Institute for Economic Research in April of twenty one, they spoke of the confiscation of masks, which, uh, according to polyester microcapacitors, which are toxic to nerve, the nervous system. Also reports toxic mold, fungi, bacteria, those significant toxic to our immune systems. Crafted, which is an asbestos like material that is associated with early pulmonary toxicity and long term health problems and possibly highly respiratory. It is contained in these masks. And Health Canada issued a warning against these disposable face masks. The Jerusalem Publicist in March of twenty, asked the question of are masks good or are they good? They excited an article in Techno, Technocracy News, in which Dr. Russell Blalock wrote, the side effects vary from cognitive impairment, headaches, increased airway resistance, carbon dioxide accumulation, hypoxia up to serious life threatening complications. Summarized the three study Dr. Blalock cited, reduced adoptions levels caused by the mask, have a negative impact on the immune system, thus increasing rate of infections and possible, possibly create a much worse outcome. Dr. Blalock also points to the twelve study in which seventeen of the best studies in the field concluded masks are ineffective at protecting against the flu. The Journal of American Medical Association cited that masks should not be worn by healthy individuals. No evidence suggests this practice is effective in preventing people from getting sick. Dr. Bl, also Dr. Blalock said that mask mandates have never been used to contain any other virus pandemic ever in history of epidemics. Uh, one last thing, the International Journal of Infectious Diseases in February of twenty one, forty two studied, two hundred and thirty five thousand six hundred and sixty one children with, without comorbidities, nine thousand three hundred and fifty three children with comorbidities. And it's severe COVID was in five point one percent in children with comorbidities, point two percent in children without comorbidities. And one last thing, according to the C D C of the, as of seven twenty one twenty one, of the total, six hundred and one thousand one hundred deaths that are COVID related, which I believe are inflated, in the zero eighteen year age group, six ten thousands of a percent of all these deaths were in that age group. We should have never made these kids wear masks and it should never happen again. Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Michelle, Michelle Mallory Mask.
I'm an elementary school teacher and I also won a, uh, gatekeeper for making masks optional and not mandatory. I'd like to share some stories with you from my classroom from last year. I fought second grade. I had a little speech, I had a little speech impaired student crying because nobody could understand what he talked about at Madison. This was during recess, I think he was sitting at his desk crying in his office, and he shouldn't have played because no one could understand him. I don't think his self-confidence and self-esteem got any better last year. I think it's hindered. Masks may not be the best option for that child. I had another little boy to do on a daily basis, dealt with frustration issues. He tried very hard to control these issues, but it was a struggle. Masks was another trigger for him. He already had enough baggage, he didn't need another trigger, his masks. So masks again, were not the best option for that child. And then we had the masks that were lost and found. Sandwich between books, the papers were buried in her desk. The ones that fell on the floor and were stepped on multiple times. The one that were new to clean up spills of milk and water and everything else in between. The ones that they sneeze and their mask would be filled with snow. The ones that fell in the urinal and then they put back on their face. Masks are supposed to reduce the spread of germs. These masks were petri dishes. May not be the best option for these kids, especially these young kids. We eat lost so much time and instruction due to COVID as it is. When these kids are in the classroom, they're playing with the mask, going everywhere and looking for them. We lead to more instruction time. You know as well as I do, in our district or our population, we can't afford to lose any instruction time at all. We're already behind eight one, we're already kind of tough. So masks may not be the best option for our district, especially since we're a rural district. In the last seven days, there have only been two new cases and that's across the county, not just our district. Uh, so we are not substantial, we are not in a high infected rate. So please make the right decision for our district, not for Pittsburgh, or, you know, Philadelphia, but for Constance District. Our kids need you to stand up for them. Please choose wisely.
Thank you. Uh, moving, that's all we have, public comment. Moving to athletics recreation, please.
Supplemental parents asked to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty one twenty two school year. Intention upon receipt of assigned contract no later than one month after insurance, including posting up the position if contingency is not met. Varsity resident, assistant coach George Harvick, varsity resident assistant coach Jad Chescu, and I so move.
We have a motion of second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Spring supplemental, request approval of the following twenty one twenty two spring supplemental contracts. Intention upon receipt of assigned contract no later than one month after insurance, including posting up the contingency is not met, and I so move.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval to accept the reservation of Andrew Hendrick for his basketball gift, effective available. I so move.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
So I have Mr. Monty. Mr. Lake? Mr. Adams? That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. Billings and grounds, please.
Item number eleven A, request approval of the substitute custodian list for the two thousand twenty one twenty two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Item B, request approval of the following additions to the substitute custodian list for the twenty one twenty two school year. And they are Arthur Hope, Chad Jones, Andrew Martin, and I so move.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Item C, request approval to build an office for teachers for the technology department within a room in Consville County Elementary School building. Not to exceed twenty two hundred dollars as budgeted, and I so move.
Motion is second, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Item D, request approval to purchase a notification system, a P A system, for Oskin County Elementary School, and open systems at a cost of thirty three thousand five hundred twenty eight dollars. And speakers at a cost of one thousand three hundred and sixty eight dollars through Co-Stars, item number zero four zero, zero six four, and to be paid from capital reserve fund, and I so move.
Motion is second. Question, was we able to get another quote?
No, I did. But I did find out what it costs, it's at the number of companies by two of eighteen, thirty seven.
How much?
Thirty seven.
So about the same size as this?
You have, uh, B D for the paper.
Did you check on, uh, availability?
Saturday, September the eleventh, seven to eleven P M. Item three, Joanne. Festival performing arts center is requesting the use of the high school auditorium for a dance recital May the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, four to ten. May the twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, at four P M, at ten P M. May the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, from eleven A M to ten P M. And may the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, from eleven A M to ten P M. Number four, Conso area high school marching band is requesting to use the Falcon Stadium for a community preview night. On Saturday, August the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, from two P M to nine P M. And the brain date of Saturday, August twenty-first, two P M to nine A M. Nine P M, so. And the last item, number five, the Conso High School Band Program is requesting we use the high school stage and auditorium for rehearsals on Tuesdays, December the seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and May third, two thousand twenty-two, from two P M to five thirty. And rehearsals on Thursdays, December the ninth, and May the fifth, four thirty to nine thirty, in no part of the district. And I so move.
Second is what?
Yes, we have a second question, Troy.
I just, I know myself I had questions, and I know Mr. Harsman had questions, but I'd like to thank the board secretary. And a little common good fashion giving us the buttons we add back to the rental. So thank you very much.
Yes. Have a motion in second hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And that's all we have, um. Mr. Sandstrom, yes. Mr. Lake?
Nothing, thank you.
So we have.
Moving to. Or negative three law, right, please.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic, I have nothing. Mr. Lake?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Panzella?
Nothing, thank you.
All we have, thank you.
Thank you, Conso area career and technical center, Mr. Lake.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Request approval of the M O U memorandum of understanding between the Conso area school district and the Conso area education association regarding the occupational advisory committee meetings at the Conso area career and technical center. And I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the articulation agreement between Triangle Tech and the Conso area career and technical center effective July the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the grant agreement between the Conso area career and technical center and the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry regarding the schools-to-work grant award, and I so move.
Motion in the second. Anybody have any idea how much that grant was? How much?
My recollection is two sixty-six, and that was through, um, Dr. Little and Mr. James for our heavy equipment, um, chart.
Excellent. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the memorandum of understanding, M O U, between the Conso area career and technical center and the Bureau of Career and Technical Education, B C T E, for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Martuzzi, Aaron Gadd. Mr. Mongeau. Mr. James. That's all we have, Mr. O'Matic, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Cory Young, Mr. Granola.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Request approval for the Dibbles Eight Ed Annual Student License, and that's eight hundred and sixty licenses, from M five, at a cost of two twelve thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars as budgeted, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval for the I U one to provide professional department sessions in mathematics on August second, twenty twenty-one, at a cost for a trade of approximately two hundred and fifty dollars to be paid for from the superintendent's meeting, approved budget amount of one thousand dollars. Zero dollars have been used to date from the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two approved budget. And reimbursement for staff to be paid out, paid from A-GAS-T-S-I funds, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Just a point of order, Mr. President. The approximately two hundred and fifty dollars, I was informed by Dr. Coons today that that approximately two hundred and fifty dollars will be zero dollars to the district for out of that particular budget amount due to A T S I funds being approved for the other portion of that as well. We had to wait for the state to approve that two hundred and fifty dollars, so they did say the approximately two hundred and fifty dollars, just as a point clarification. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
President, since we've had an update to the motion, should the motion, um, represent what truly is going to be, I eliminated the approximately two hundred and fifty dollars to zero.
Yes, I think the board secretary would record it that way.
Okay, thank you. So I so move. I think we already.
Yeah, we got a motion second. We're all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Project Leadaway P L T W, request approval for Project Leadaway P L T W, just fee for the twenty twenty-one to twenty-two school year as budgeted, and for each building, and a cost, and a total cost of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And the P L T W grant money will be applied to the computer science, just the fee of two thousand two hundred dollars, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, before I mention about the committee meeting that we had, I wanted to point out that I think this could fit under curriculum. Uh, the skills on display, there was a newspaper article, benches being built by our career students for the Fayette County Fairgrounds, and I believe as we were walking down here out of the, out five, I just like the building where a number of those benches, or benches like the ones photo here. And I would like to, uh, on behalf of the entire board, commend the students and the teacher and the principal of Career and Technical Center for stepping up for the community. We all appreciate it. And so, thank you. Okay, we had a committee meeting that was held on July thirteenth at two forty-five. Mr. Martray, anything further? Mr. Sandstrom? Dr. Coon? That's all we have, Mr. O'Matic.
Thank you. Cyber?
I have nothing. Mr. Harshman?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Granola? Um, Dr. Sparrin? Uh, Mr. Coates? I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Fellow programs?
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Request approval of purchase screencasting fee for record on limited license that a cost of ten thousand five hundred dollars to be paid through the gear grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
It was a committee meeting held on July thirteenth at three fifteen, and that's all I have, Mr. Sandstrom. Mr. Martray? Dr. Coons? That's all, Mr. O'Matic, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, finance?
Item seventeen A, request the approval of the budget transfers, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Seventeen B, request the approval of the attached requisition and to authorize the school district business office to, uh, process the purchase order, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item seventeen C, request the approval of the attached district credit card orders and to authorize the district business office to process the order, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item seventeen D, request the approval of the children's and grounds purchases between July first through July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
And item seventeen E, request the approval of the resolution to continue the local economic revitalization tax assistant act, which is blur, as proposed, and I so move.
Question?
Motion is second, question?
Could maybe Mr. Solicitor or someone fill us in on this since we're, or just go ahead and click, please?
Uh, yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Sir, do your finished question.
Uh, yes, so this is a request from the city of Conso. They have a local economic revitalization tax assistant ordinance in place that provides taxes and incentives for new development improvements within the city of Conso. This is a program that they've had in place for several decades. They're required to re-up that, renew that program every five years. So this is a request from the city to renew that for an additional five-year period. Uh, it's the same request that is, is, um, because also it's in the county as well.
Same areas and same everything, or they updated anything in the last five years?
So this, this would be consistent with exactly what's been approved in prior years. There's no change either in the five to the zones, the exemption schedules toward the time period, so it would be in place for another five years. Same exact zones and districts, um, without any change.
Thank you very much.
This is a new item from Monday night, it was not on Monday night's agenda. Any questions or concerns from the board and any closing public? Any questions, call down a question? Very nice, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Uh, Mr. Granola, do you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
And no, nothing, thank you. That's all we have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Moving to food service, Mr. Martuzzi.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Request approval of purchase of freezer for Dunmore Toxic Elementary School from Singer Equipment Company at a cost of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, five hundred dollars for pad neighbor as budgeted, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the fallen dairy for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, Snyder's Dairy, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the cafeteria substitute list for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as proposed, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. Panzella.
I didn't see the list, was it on there, or they, we didn't? They're not in the hard copy, that's also, I'm just not sure if it were approved. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, personnel and review and liaison.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Uh, nineteen A resignation, request approval to accept the resignation of Candice Miller, teacher, effective August second, two thousand twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen B, a resignation, request approval to accept the resignation of John Masco, security, effective immediately, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen C, unpaid leave, request approval for Jamie Howser, teacher, to take an unpaid leave of absence for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen D, unpaid leave, request approval for Molly Gibson, teacher, to take an unpaid leave of absence for the first semester of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen E, sabbatical, request approval for a net dues teacher to take a sabbatical leave of absence for the first semester of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen F, sabbatical, request approval for Elaine White, teacher, to take a sabbatical leave of absence for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen G, sabbatical, request approval for Brendan Henry, teacher, to take a sabbatical leave of absence for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen H, sabbatical, request approval for Jamie Lambie, teacher, to take a sabbatical leave of absence for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen I, support professional substitutes, request approval to support professional substitutes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen J, professional substitutes, request approval of professional substitutes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, as proposed, and I so move.
Sec, motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen K, Cam's Library Clerk, request approval to hire Tiffany Bro as a library clerk effective August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen L, W, West Croft Elementary Library Clerk, request approval to hire Chelsea Nistowski as a library clerk effective August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen M, personal student aide, request approval to hire Stacy Ruvo as a personal student aide effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen N, personal student aide, request approval to hire Brittany Steelwagon as a personal student aide effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen O, personal student aide, request approval to hire Katie Wiltrow as a personal student aide effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen P, personal student aide, request approval to hire Joanna Hughes as a personal student aide effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen Q, personal student aide, request approval to hire Catherine Martuzzi as a personal student aide effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen R, personal student aide, request approval to hire Jeanette Wadsworth as a personal student aide effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen S, special education teacher hiring, request approval to hire Caitlin Schaefer as a special education teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen T, special education teacher hiring, request approval to hire Seth Minor as a special education teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen U, special education teacher hiring, request approval to hire Kimberly Yager as a special education teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen V, speaker, speech teacher hiring, request approval to hire Brooke Schumar as a specialty, speaks, as a speech teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen W, science teacher hiring, request approval to har, Harry Morton as a science teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen X, social studies teacher hiring, request approval to hire Alexander Guy as a social studies teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
I abstain.
Abstention? Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen Y, social studies teacher hiring, uh, request approval to have Robert Shea as a social studies teacher effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
I abstain.
Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen Z, E L A teacher hiring, request approval to hire Megan Hatch as an English language arts teacher effective August twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. And I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen A A, retirement, request approval to accept the retirement of Robin Schultz, secretary, effective February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen A B, additions to the professional substitute list, request approval of the additions to the professional substitute list for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Courtney Kenny, grades P K through four, and special education P K through eight, Amanda Hansley, got three, elementary K through six, early childhood in, uh, through three. William Swink, emergency, Jackie Eckenrod, emergency, Mallory Jackson, emergency, Tara Keifer, nurse. And the retirements for Deborah Lutska, Judith Mitchell, Leanne Bell, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Nineteen A C, additions to the support professional substitute list, request approval of the additions to the subs, support professional substitute list for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Randy Corbin, Dawn Johnston, Marissa Flanders, Shonda Porter, Brittany Strider, Melanie Taxaker, Marcy Witt, and that was Deborah Petroni who retired, and Diane Smith. And I so move.
Second.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried. Hey, Mr. Granola, do you have anything else? Mr. Mongeau? Dr. Bradley, do you have anything additional?
Yes, Mr. Martray, I wanted to thank the board for, uh, the time that they put into the hirings that just were placed. Um, all those hirings take one more evening, multiple evenings out of your day, and it's much appreciated. And also the members of professional staff and administration participated in, uh, interviews. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Solomon, do you have anything additional? And that's all we have, Mr. O'Matic. Thank you. Moving to policy and legislative, there's a question.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic, I have nothing. Mr. Martuzzi? Mr. Granola? Dr. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Harshman. Just to advocate for the general public to keep communicating with your elected officials, you know, whether it's on a state level or federal issue, federal level, uh, you know, two things on the horizon will be, uh, one more round of cyber charter schools. It definitely one hundred percent impacts Conso area school district, the operation, the way the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Department of Education operates our cyber charter schools, and anything with health and safety plans. Uh, the more you advocate to your elected officials at not only the local level, but the state and federal level, the more loudly you'll be held, and, and I thank you for that advocacy. It allows us to operate on a much more local level if we're not handcuffed by federal and or, uh, state mandates, not suggestions, but mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have, Mr. O'Matic.
Thank you. Uh, safety and security, Christine.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Uh, one thing that I felt mentioned, uh, those who are retirees, uh, wish them the best of luck for all their years of service in the school district. Uh, under safety and security, uh, threat assessment team, request approval of the formation of a state mandated school district, threat assessment team to include director of security, Michael Parlak, director of transportation, Richard Evans, director of technology, Kevin Goze, director of special education, Nick D'Amico, director of buildings and grounds, Scott Kurz, school nurse, Rhonda Brewer, and city of Conso chief police, William Hammon. And I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Twenty-one P, full-time status, request approval to change high school security officer, Ernest Nicholson, from thirty-two hours per week to full-time status, effective immediately, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
Uh, twenty-one C, security substitute list, request approval of the security substitute list for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried. And our committee meeting was held on July nineteenth, eleven A M. And that's all I have, uh, Mr. O'Matic. Mr. Sandstrom, do you have anything additional? Mr. Martuzzi? Mr. Carla? That's all we have. Thank you, special education police.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Request approval on the agreement between Presley Ridge Greensburg and the Conso area school district for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year at a cost of eighteen thousand dollars per semester per student and one thousand eight hundred dollars per summer, or a hundred and fifty dollars per day for the E S Y twenty twenty-two. No increase in the tuition, the two hundred and fifty dollar per student E S Y. Currently, we have two students in that program, and I so.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval on an agreement between Highlands Hospital Regional Center for Autism and the Conso area school district for educational services for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year at a cost of twelve-month payments, eighty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. It's an increase of seventeen fifty per student, and I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval on then the agreement between the Conso area school district and Marquee Pennsylvania for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as proposed at the following service costs to be paid from the COVID mitigation grant. The original agreement was brought, or approved on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Five students currently. C C S student tuition, twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour. C C S P C A, twenty-eight dollars an hour. The S L P, a hundred and four oh four dollars an hour. And the O T at eighty-one sixty-eight dollars an hour. And I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor. Opposed, motion carried.
The committee meeting was held on July thirteenth, one thirty. Mr. Lake, anything further? Mr. Martuzzi? Mr. D'Amico? That's all we have on our special education, Mr. O'Matic.
Thank you. Moving to student services, Mr. Sandstrom.
Thank you, Mr. O'Matic. Yearly supplementals, request approval of the yearly non-athletic supplementals for twenty-one, twenty-two school year as proposed, I so move.
Motion is second hall in favor.
Question?
Question?
Uh, we did pull one out of that, correct?
Uh, that's what I noticed, Mr. Harshman. It was, uh, was several open ones on there, uh, from what I remember, and I think the one was in question was of the dossier. Correct, Mr. O'Matic?
Correct.
Correct, the as presented and as will go into the minutes, there are several open and there are some that were currently posted that were never filled, so there are a series of names that were recommended, a series of open positions, and a series of posted positions, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of student teaching assignment with Leverage University for the fall 21 semester from August 23rd through December 17th, 2021, I so move.
Motion second all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of affiliation agreement between the St. Vincent's College School of Education and the College Area School District for field placements, student teaching and internships for 21-22 school year, I so move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the five-year school district affiliation agreement between California University of Pennsylvania and the Conansville School District for student teaching from July 21th through July 26th, I so move.
Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Request approval of the resignation of Carrie Dowke, high school student council sponsor, effective immediately, I so move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
I have, Mr. Moon, yeah. Mr. Lake?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. D'Amico? That's all we have.
Thank you. Moving to technology.
Request approval of the technology employee substitute list for the 21-22 school year, Michael Bauer, David Keaton, Cody Vance, Caleb Windrow, and I so move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next, request approval to renew the license agreement for NearPod at an approximate cost of $12,250 as budgeted, and I so move.
Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Next, request approval to renew license agreement for WeVideo at an approximate cost of $5,057.09 as budgeted, and I so move.
Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Next, request approval to renew license agreement for School Messenger at an approximate cost of $7,548 as budgeted, and I so move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Next, request approval to purchase a carry door access system for the central office from J-Maxx Supply at a cost not to exceed $8,000, and I so move.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, opposed, motion carried.
Just like to thank Mr. Goost and his group for saving us that money on that door system. And Mr. Harshman, do you have anything else?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Marcher? Mr. Goost? That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake, Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley, Mr. Fanzelli, you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Harshman?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Nothing, thank you.
We have nothing to say to you, Mr. O'Malley, thank you.
Thank you. Couple items there under informational board policy. Moving into President's Report, request approval of CASD, CACTC Health and Safety Plan update for the 2021-2022 school year. Please be advised that July 28th, 2021, consistent with both CASD and CACTC Health and Safety Plans for 2020-2021 and 2021-2022 school years, CASD, CACTC will develop mitigation plans in line with the most recent PDEPA DOH and CDC guidance, with plans being updated as needed. Wearing a mask will be adjusted to the current PDEPA DOH guidance. One, consistent with the lifting of the universal face covering order of PA Secretary of Health, effective immediately until further notice, there is no longer a mandate to wear masks in Conansville School District buildings and events. However, if an individual so chooses as a matter of continuing health concern, they may continue to wear an appropriate or suitable mask or face covering. Additionally, CASD encourages all eligible individuals to be vaccinated ASAP. If any individual is in need of a vaccination assistance, please contact the District Administration Office or Human Resources. Please note that this notice is subject to change pending further mandates, requirements, recommendations, or guidance from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and the Centers for Disease Control and other public entities, and I so move. Second. Any questions? Go ahead. Would you stand up, please, and state your name?
Hi, I'm Elaine Paul. I'm wondering if the CDC mandates a mask, I mean a mask, what happens if you don't follow it? You get your fingers cut, or what?
So, so, Mr. Bradley, so, so this, in effect, says in Conansville School District buildings and events, it's a personal preference choice if you are...
I know at the moment that if CDC would mandate it again...
They, they...
What happens?
Yeah, they did.
It was a recommendation, not, you didn't make it a mandate, now, what happens then?
We would have to see, we would have to determine legally if we have to adjust based on a mandate versus a recommendation.
Say, what happens if you don't follow the mandate?
I'm sorry.
If you don't follow the mandate, what happens?
I can only talk, potentially, potentially with old federal funds, they could, you know, they could be, potentially, with old or federal funds.
So, it's all about the money, not kids, or, what's going on with the whole United States? Another thing, vaccine, if there's an experimental vaccine, so, there are long-term studies going, and people want kids to get it? What happens if the 10 years down the road when they're all sterile, or sick? It's not an FDA-approved vaccine, so you shouldn't be saying our kids need to get vaccinated because that's our decision, and it's experimental vaccine, and it's not FDA-approved with any long-term studies.
Thank you. Superintendent, Superintendent Bradley?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Also, the latest numbers from the vaccine adverse event reporting system, the, I don't have the exact number on the record, but it's right around 11,000 deaths after a person was vaccinated. There have only been 401 deaths of children between the ages of zero to 18 since the beginning of this. Why in the world are we recommending these children to be vaccinated?
He didn't recommend it to children.
Well, no.
That's not what he said. That's not what he said.
No.
He can explain to you what he said, he did not say children.
No.
It's a preference, it's a personal preference, anyway.
I just, I just want to clarify. All individuals.
Yeah, all eligible individuals. If you're eligible to be vaccinated, and you...
Is that on the age of 12?
Excuse me, yeah, correct, that's, that's your eligibility.
Why do we encourage 12-year-olds to be vaccinated? There's no science behind this at all.
I appreciate you. Thanks.
Anything else, Superintendent Bradley?
As far as the masking, I just want to clarify that, you know, today, moving forward, we were, you know, trying to update first the June 28th, 2021 repeal from the Secretary of Health of Pennsylvania Department of Health, so we were in, based on the June 28th repeal of that, and to go along with that, that includes all events in the district, including Kinder Camp, I wanted to clarify that, there were some new questions about Kinder Camp and any athletic competition moving forward, or have athletic voluntary practices, those are all long-term masking as well, and we appreciate input from the public on that matter. Anything else?
I've got questions.
Excuse me, right now, transportation, public transportation is a mandate, and it is mandated, and my recommendations, we follow the mandate of the, that's a state and a federal mandate, which is different than a recommendation, so for the bus ride, you know, that's the mandate, every, masking is a privilege, not a right, so in the district, there are districts that do not transport their students, we do transport our students, and my recommendations, we follow that, and our health and safety plan indicates that as well, Mr. O'Malley.
Again, where is the, where's the science?
Sorry.
Where's the science? CDC are not elected officials.
And I recommend you address the state and federal legislators that make these mandates thus, we can only comply with the mandate, once it's a law or a rule, we're bound to comply, I mean, you may not, I mean...
It's a law, it's not a law.
Please, sir, don't, don't shout out, please. Do you have to wear a mask if you're on an airplane?
Yes. Yes, yes.
No, I don't.
Yes.
You could, if you're on an airplane.
You won't fly if you don't...
Whatever happened to my body, my shirt?
Sir, sir, that's a great, sir, that's a great example, and you don't have to use the transportation of all those schools here either, if you choose not to use our, that's a great example, sir, if you don't want to choose to use our transportation, you can transport your child, and masking isn't a condition of...
Well, as Mr. Bradley said, it's a federal mandate, it has nothing to do with the school. Well, I don't know. I, I, good question.
That's another thing, too, why in the world are people driving vehicles with masks on? There have been instances where people have passed out and not a mask, it's nonsense. My boys wrestled every week last wrestling season, and Mr. Bradley, you can testify to this, we didn't have to wear masks, these kids too often wear masks, period.
We have a motion of second, we have discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call, please. Yes.
In a no vote, I wasn't before I heard this discussion, there's a lot of good points being brought out, and I think we need to further discuss this language in here, vaccination is mandates and all that, so at this point, I'm going to say no on this motion, not on the concept, not on this motion.
Yes?
Yes.
I said, the reason I'm saying no on this, I listened to the news morning, I've been consistent with this since last March, the way I vote on this issue, I respect people's opinions, but when I hear the CDC and the American Pediatrics Association making comments on television, Dr. Lewitsky, who's the director, recommending now, they're not mandating, they're recommending K through 12, wear masks when you're inside buildings, and so for that reason, I trust the organization's opinion, and I'm going to have to stick with that right now.
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Moon? Mr. Fanzelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanks?
Yes.
Yes. And before, before I leave my report, I'm going to ask the solicitor to update the board and the public, so there's going to be some procedural changes on how board meetings are conducted here in the next few months, so solicitor, could you update everybody, please?
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley, recently, there was legislation that affected the Sunshine Act, which applies to public meetings and the conduct of public meetings, one of those changes was it requires all agenda items to be put on an agenda at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting, currently, Conansville School District does make its agenda available to the public prior to 24 hours in advance of meetings, so we are complying in that respect, it would restrict, however, what could be raised and addressed at a public meeting without being on the agenda at least 24 hours in advance. There are several exceptions to that rule, one dealing with emergencies, one dealing with items that have just been brought to the attention of the school district within the last 24 hours before a meeting, and they do not deal with expenditure of funds or entering into a contract or agreement, and then there is a procedure in place for other items that were not already added to be added by motion and approval by the board, it would require, however, in that instance, for an explanation given as to why that was not previously added to the agenda. In addition to that, the actual agendas will need to be posted physically at the location, at the administrative building, and the location of the meeting itself, so here at the high school, also at least 24 hours in advance. We already post the agenda on the website, which complies with the website requirement of new legislation as well, so for a large part, the school district is compliant with those new changes already, but we will need to monitor, make sure that items are not added to the agenda less than 24 hours in advance without complying with the requirements of that new legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, solicitor, Mr. Bradley, further comment?
Yeah, thank you, not in regards to that, just general superintendent's comments. Good? It's all right.
Paul, something similar? Yeah, wait a minute, we have no, no items for public comment on, on agenda. Dr. Coos, you have anything else, that?
Nothing.
Mr. Robinson, anything?
Nothing.
Thanks, Mr. O'Malley, I wanted to congratulate and welcome our new Falcons, the new employees that were hired, I wanted to welcome them to Conansville, we look forward to years of service, I wanted to announce one of our partners, Mirikey, is offering a four-week program for school-aged children from August 2nd to 27th, the summer program emphasizes socialization and gross motor activity, this is a structured therapeutic and fun camp where individuals will get the opportunity to engage in a variety of indoor and outdoor activities, you can contact Mirikey, STAT for formal information, or absolutely Mr. D'Amico in our own special education program and pupil services program, we'll be able to help anybody that's interested in the Mirikey four-week camp. And lastly, I wanted to congratulate and thank Mr. Evans for the work that he did for the John Woodruff Oak Tree Documentary, he opened up his time availability to document tenor, document maker Sean Stiff, and Sean featured the John Woodruff Oak Tree through the tribute review, it's a really interesting, really entertaining, it's 100% one of the most professional documentaries I've ever seen, I believe everybody in Conansville will enjoy, appreciate it, should most likely be mandatory Falcon viewing, it also highlights a student in a parallel John Woodruff's career to one of our own students, Kilron Raggett, and we wish them luck in their production and may go on and win awards, so it's a really neat tribute review product documentary, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Just one last...
Mr. O'Malley?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I wanted to give Superintendent Dr. Bradley an opportunity to update on getting back school, the opening of school, we were to have monthly reports, college reports, I'm wondering if you have that on the mind, or you wish to do that verbally now?
I, absolutely, we are absolutely on track to open five days a week, as your health and safety plan indicates, this health and safety plan update actually clarifies that what we're following, clarifies that masks are optional, and we, I know the administration, the professional staff, the support staffs, the various support staffs, whether cafeteria maintenance, custodians, they are on track to open five days a week, with as many students here as possibly in their own safe development, we feel that that's the best option for our students, we feel that the board has been rather clear in making that a possibility and a plan to go five days a week, back to as normal as we can in that BC world, that before-crowned virus world. Thank you.
Mr. O'Malley, I want to thank the superintendent... Mr. O'Malley, I want to thank the superintendent, I made that motion, was asking him to sit forward and made about going back five days a week, and asked our superintendent to make that happen, and get everything into place, and all the dominoes are standing straight up, ready to go, and I want to thank you very much for your reference, energy, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, I'm going to circle back a moment back to Buildings and Browns, if we're going to try to get a price to fix that system out there, notification system will have about three weeks, just in case we get a couple of prices, additional prices to replace it with the one we have. Thank you, do I have anything else, if not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.